Call this South River Mayor Borough Council meeting of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one to order. Susan, our new clerk.
Can you tell everybody to be like?
What, Ray?
No, I'm talking.
He's got a room full of people over, so that's understandable. You only have one more to get through, Ray, so hang in there. You can do it. All right, welcome to our new clerk, Ms. Minnick. Would you be so kind as to read the statement of notice of publication?
Sure. This meeting is called pursuant to the provision of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, was included in the list of meetings notice advertised in the Home News Tribune on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building on January first, twenty twenty-one, has remained continuously posted as required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Also being it's being held via online video conference provided by SOON. And due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, no members of the public shall be permitted to physically attend the meeting originally scheduled to be held at the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey. The public, however, is invited to attend the meeting electronically and will have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Siula?
Here.
Councilman Gindi?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Council President Eppinger?
Here.
And I believe Councilman Gertchinsky is absent this evening.
He's trying, Mayor, he's trying to get on. He's having a hard time logging on. He's trying a couple of different avenues.
Okay, join him. Anytime we'll continue. We'll do the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Request that we have a moment of silence. Thank you. No proclamations, honor, words, or presentations to read. We do not have an executive session. There's nothing to discuss with the agenda session. Our new business is misplaced in our agenda. That usually comes after the consent resolutions, and those would be resolutions to be read separately. I don't think there's any resolutions to be read separately. No? Okay. As we go into the ordinances, just to remind people, two ordinances that have become quite popular in discussions and things like that. One concerns commercial motor vehicle parking, and the other is the cannabis ordinance. They will be taken up in our July meeting. We will not be discussing it here. There's no ordinances for second reading, but there are ordinances for first reading by title only, twenty twenty-one dash oh nine. Mrs. Minnick?
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash nine and ordinance authorizing various federal housing and community development grant improvements and equipment.
Thank you. Please note that Councilman Gertchinsky has arrived and has joined the meeting. Mr. Eppinger?
I move that council pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh nine and its first reading by title only. The clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law in the second reading in public hearing to be held on July twelfth, I believe.
Yes.
July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one at seven P. M. By way of electronic teleconference or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street in South River.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Ms. Eppinger, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Council President Eppinger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll revisit this in July. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten. Ms. Minnick?
Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in the acquisition of various capital equipment.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance twenty dash twenty-one, twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-one dash ten on its first reading by title only, that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading in a public hearing to be held on July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one at seven P. M. By way of electronic teleconference or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
I'll second up.
Motion has been made by Ms. Eppinger, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Council President Eppinger?
Yes.
Thank you.
You will revisit this ordinance in July. Moving on to our reports first from the professional and all the various departments. As we traditionally do, we will start with Mr. Koch. Good evening, Mr. Koch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and everybody else. The twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one roadway improvements, we are working away on the designs. I did pick up some of the applications for the curb and sidewalk program. The 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 basic sketch that we provide didn't seem to have been attached, so I've met with Michelle and gave her the documents so that that can be reposted and get it out to those folks. Right now, we have nine of them. I think there were a couple more sent over to me today, but I haven't had the chance to open that, so that is moving along. We sent a letter as the twenty twenty-two state aid programs are available. We sent a letter over to the borough discussing that on June second. So you have the DOT is accepting applications for the state aid programs. And then they're also accepting for the twenty twenty-two Safe Roots to Schools program. We first, we attached a list of roads from last year that we have adjusted to reflect DOT projects and all the items that would typically be included there. We would need direction on that with the deadline coming up very soon. Perhaps tonight we could discuss that or just perhaps agree just to submit all of these and see what kind of funding the borough gets. And then attached to it, we put a description from the DOT, the letter from the DOT of April twenty-sixth, which outlines all the programs, which is the municipal aid, the transit village, the bike ways, and the safe streets to transit. And then we also attached the information from the DOT regarding safe routes to schools. This morning, we downloaded information from the DOT on eligible projects and activities for safe streets to schools. We will forward that over to Mr. Landenski or to the clerk to distribute to the governing body so that you have that. And that will help you in determining what kind of projects you might have that, you know, and whether they would be eligible. But for right now, I think the primary focus is what applications you would like to submit for trust fund, which is something you've traditionally done. And if something, if there are projects you would like to submit for the other the other three, I will tell you, I went on to the DOT website as outlined there, and the borough of South River is not listed as a transit village. So according to their information, you would, no town that is on that list would be eligible for that. And the other two, bike ways and safe streets to transit, I did a little research on that. There is a million dollars throughout the state. That is just one million dollars for all towns, counties to submit for. And last year, there were four grants of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each, as I recall, for both bike ways as well as safe streets to transit. So it's a very competitive program. But if you have something that you think would be competitive and you'd like us to submit, we will get to work on it. We don't need a resolution on this until within the next, we would only need a resolution within in the next thirty days. But it would be very helpful if we could get direction tonight because the date is looming and and towards the end, everybody's submitting and the system sometimes gets a bit overloaded. The electrical substation maintenance, I have a schedule from High Energy Electric. They said they were going to start on Friday. I believe more reasonable that they would probably have started today. And I will follow up with them, but they gave us an updated schedule for that. Well, number two, the contractor has drilled the well and is working on installing the exterior casing. I think that is it, but I will gladly answer any questions you may have.
Bruce?
You go ahead.
I had called you during the week. Last week I spoke with Bethany. You weren't in the office. I was just trying to reach out to you to see about the safe, the safe streets. I know the green team had done something with along with keep middlesex moving with trying to see if we could do safe streets in South River or pick safe streets going to schools for bike paths for South River.
Hey, good. Is it on the county's bike plan? Or, you know, sometimes they have.
Over, Ray.
What? Oh, John, I'm sorry, John. Obviously, we called away for some reason. Sorry, continue, Julie. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to see if maybe we could look something up so we can figure out whether we can apply for that kind of grant money, especially since the green team previously did join up with keep middlesex moving to do something with kids biking more to school.
Do they have anything that they put together for it, Julie?
I would have to check back in previous year how they did it. I know they kind of were, they started up a complete street program to figure out. I don't know what step they left off on.
Well, I'd be happy. I'm sorry, I don't recall getting the message. I would have certainly called you back. And and feel free to use my cell number at any time. If I'm not in the office, feel free to dial that.
I I look for it, but I couldn't. I I switched phones and I no longer, so I left the.
Off line, we can, I will gladly give it to you again, and so that you have it. Mr. Landenski does. Many of the borough people do. You're more than welcome to call me anytime on that over weekend. It doesn't matter to me, so feel free. And I'll be happy to have that discussion with you. If the governing body wants us to do that and work together and put that together as well, we will.
I think if we at least try, the grant money's there. I know people try to get the money as quickly as possible, but if we have something that we did in previous years with keep middlesex moving, hopefully, we can continue with that and try to.
Go to South River Virtual Book Board.
Richard, mute yourself, please.
Julie, that was which one that you were looking at?
The complete streets or like the bike paths?
Okay, so bike ways would probably be the one, dedicated bike ways in New Jersey. Or the other would be to consider the safe routes to schools. I will tell you, that's a different program that's federally funded. There is design assistance with that. There's a pretty extensive amount of information that it actually explains in the little out, the three or four page document that I'm going to send over. So if that's what you'd like to apply for, that one has more time, and we'd be happy to help with that as well, which so perhaps I'll be in the office tomorrow, Julie. Feel free to give me a call at the office. I'll be in there generally earlier than eight o'clock, but definitely by then. And feel free to give me a call, and while we're talking, I'll make sure you have my cell number.
Okay, I just got. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, that problem solved then. Good. So I would just ask if the governing body would like to make a decision not regarding the safe routes to schools because that deadline is in the future, but with respect to the earlier program, which is due July one, and that is the municipal aid. As I said, it's transit village. I don't believe you're eligible for bike ways and safe streets to transit.
Oh, Bruce, I think we've discussed this. Where we get most of our aid from or where we get the money to pave the streets comes from the municipal aid pack. So obviously, we want to, we always want to apply for that.
Hey, very good.
So we'll, we'll, we'll do that. That'll be, that'll be up to the governing body to, I know, working with, working with you and with, with, with Mr. Suarez and Mr. Landenski to get the, to get the list together for the roads for two thousand and twenty-two. That obviously will be a major, major focus of applying for, for state aid. As far as the other, the other two. I know you and I have had a, we had a discussion, and again, just to remind everybody that, as Bruce noted, that the bike ways and the safe streets to transit, it's not a one million dollar per grant. It's one million for the entire state. And I guess one of the things that Mr. Koch and I, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the things you and I talked about, the, the issue with that, unless the it's one of those things where they all saying is that go large or go home. Unless we've got a project that is in, I would say, the two hundred and fifty thousand or greater range. It's, it's almost like it's been one of those situations where it happens so many times with these grants. We'll spend more money to get the grant than the grant is worth, and so it would have to be a grant, I would say, an application would, would have to be for a very large project. I'm, I'm kind of paraphrasing our, our half an hour discussions, but I'm, I think I'm pretty close, right, Bruce?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out that it's very competitive. That's all, and that.
And the size.
Yes, and, and the amount of money is, is, you know, at least based on last year was two hundred and fifty thousand, as I mentioned earlier, for four different entities in the state. Doesn't mean you can't apply. I just.
Agreed.
I just feel that I should share that with you, so you realize just how competitive it is and then make your decision from there, which is, you know, entirely up to the governing body.
My suggestion would be to the governing body is that if there are any, or if there are projects that you support or feel would make sense for each one, either one of those grants to reach out on in an email to Art, to Bruce and the mayor, let them know what it is, because obviously, we've got to apply sooner than later. And I think that would be the best, the best way to go about this is, is of course, never, you know, never shut out the opportunity to apply for a grant. But I would think if, if a member of the governing body has something that would fit into this, and I know Julie's talked about maybe tying in with the keep, keep the middle, keep middlesex moving project or grant, that's a great idea. I think it's, it's, it's what it's the, the fourteenth of June. So everybody, anybody who's got any suggestions, I would say by the end of this week, no later, get that information to the mayor, to Art and to Bruce so that they can take the action necessary that we can apply for the grants. Does anybody else have anything else for Bruce tonight? Oh, the mayor's back. Very good.
Bruce? Yes, I'm happy to see that well number two is being replaced. But if my mind serves me correctly, the well went down back in twenty sixteen. In twenty eighteen, administration at the time spent almost ninety-eight thousand dollars to try to rehabilitate it, and it never took off because the problem still existed. Whatever happened with all those parts that were being used for that well at the time?
Well, the well redeveloped, I'm. I will, if I knew ahead of time, Peter, I would check with the guys to see if they're using the same pump. No, that, that was the old equipment. I don't recall if removing the motor over, Peter. I, if I knew ahead of time, I would have gladly checked on that for you, but I'll make a note to myself about that. And I will check on that tomorrow. Yes, the well was redeveloped and it was functioning well, and then, no pun intended, it was functioning properly. And then it seemed to become bound up again, and it sucked air, so.
Right, so my concern was we spent ninety-eight thousand dollars at the time. Figuratively speaking, flushing down a toilet. I don't want to lose those parts if we could use it for the future for the other two wells, especially one of our wells are close to almost a hundred years old.
Yep. I will check with that because I believe as part of this, the other one will be abandoned, and if that is the case, I will I'm writing myself a note, and I will look into that tomorrow, and as long as the, the gentlemen who are working on it are in, I will get you those answers, okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else for Bruce? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Koch. Have a good evening.
Thank you to all and good night.
Good night.
Hi, Bruce.
Bruce.
I'm having an emergency phone call, hence that's why I was late. Mr. Zenga?
Thank you, Mayor.
Word.
Just going to explain a little bit further. The two ordinances on first reading that were approved. The first one was a capital ordinance for HCD funding. This was from two thousand twenties money. I was from forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars for park improvements and forty thousand for senior citizen vehicle shelter. The other ordinance on first reading was a various bond ordinance. It included roads, various roads, Alborn Street, Ferris Street, Clayton Court, sewer improvements, public works vehicles, including sanitation truck, mason dump truck, a dump truck, pickup truck, lawn mowers, police building improvements and various equipment and fire various equipment. Also have some resolutions. One is for OPSOB, for our billing and collections company. It's a resolution. We went out to bid and they were the lowest bidder, so we're looking to pass a resolution for another three-year agreement. Another resolution for the nonprofit demand that we spoke about last week, or last meeting, I mean, and then we also have another resolution for chapter one fifty-nine, these are grants that were received after the budget was adopted. That's it.
Okay. In fact, the list that you just read was the list that Bruce has in his report for the twenty twenty roads.
Correct. Twenty twenty-one roads, yes.
Okay, very good. Anything for Mr. Zenga?
I have a question, Mr. Zenga.
Sure.
With, with the OPSOB bid, did you add for us to be able to go paperless with our electric and water bills?
Yes, that's in there. Yes.
So that will now be an option for our residents?
It'll be an option. We just have to, we're going to talk to OPSOB about it. It was in the bids. They have no issue with it, so then we have to now implement it.
There was something else that I had requested. We knew if OPSOB could do, which, do you remember what it was?
No, but it was in there.
Possibly being able to, why, to just send out one bill a month for everything? Wasn't that what, combining, combining into one statement? I think we talked about that during the budget hearings.
Yes, that's one of them, right.
Yeah, that was something. It was something else that Julie, I'm trying to remember too. That was in there, though. We spoke about it months ago, and I did put it in the bid spec, so it was in there too, but it's, it's, I'm not thinking of it right now, though.
So now will the format of paying change, like logging on, will that change for people to be able to be on accounts to see both? Or how will, will anything change on the billing of online right now?
No, right now, you still log on with the same accounts that you logged on before. Nothing has changed with that.
Okay, but once we, you know, they give the option for paperless, will that change or not?
Correct, and we have to get email addresses from people, and then the bills will be sent by email, and then people will receive it that way instead of getting a hard copy in the mail. So we're, we're going to work on that. The, the bid begins July first, and that's something I spoke with OPSOB about a month ago, so we're going to start working on that shortly.
Okay, so we don't have an actual date for that to start?
Their new contract.
Don't we have to pass, don't we have to pass this first before we can worry about dates of things starting?
Yeah, it starts July first, a new agreement, and then.
Agreement, right.
Sneak with them. Yep.
Okay, and I think the other thing that we talked about in the budget was changing the address for them, so.
Yeah, we talked about, yeah, the mailing the bills instead of mailing your payment down to Washington, D. C.
Right.
Lockbox in New Jersey. That's also in there, too. That was a, that was a exception that we can do. If we find a cheaper price in New Jersey or locally, we can then switch and give them like a certain notice, so that's in there also. They're well aware of it, so we have to see what the pricing is in New Jersey to make sure we're saving money by moving it locally. I reached out to one of the branches, right, one of their banks locally in town to see if, if the lockbox would be cheaper to move it in New Jersey compared to sending it down to Washington, D. C.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Zenga. Mr. Suarez, anything to report from DPW?
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder that our paper shred event is next Saturday, June twenty-sixth, from nine to twelve at the DPW Yard, nine Ivan Way. And there's a limit of five file boxes or a hundred pounds, no plastic bags. And it's, it's either twelve o'clock or when the truck gets filled, rain or shine. And also, Mayor, on July fifth, will be closed for the holiday. There'll be no yard waste pickup. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Anything for Mr. Suarez? Thank you, sir. Chief Tenden again, anything to report?
Good evening, Mayor. I don't have anything to report, but just on the topic of what Age was saying about July fifth, July fourth, Independence Day. That holiday was going to be coming before our next council meeting. And with Independence Day comes fireworks. So I'm just a reminder to everyone out there that there are, New Jersey has passed a law on certain fireworks such as sparklers, ground-based sparklers that emit sparks, some novelty fireworks, fireworks, such as snakes, puppets. All other fireworks are illegal, such as firecrackers, skyrockets, ball rockets, single tube devices. These items are illegal, and we will be doing a educational flyer that we'll put out on our Nixol and also on our Facebook page, so for people that don't see this tonight, they'll be able to see that on our social media pages. And that's it.
Well said, sir. Well said. Anything for the chief?
Yes, one thing, chief. Have you done anything, any applications for crossing guards? Are we still outstanding on that particular issue?
Since last council meeting, I haven't had any. We haven't had any applications for crossing guards. So again, this is my plea for everyone that's out there or anyone that's out there that's watching this or anybody in the council that has friends that want to, that need a job. We are hiring for part-time per diem crossing guards. Our, our rank is very, very thin. Whenever crossing guard, they, they do have sick time. They do have benefit days, and when they are out, we usually fill that with police officers. We pull them off the street. But because of the COVID, because of last year, because of their benefit time was carried over, because it's coming up to the end of the school year, there are more than one or two crossing guards that are using their benefit time, and it's causing a, a issue with our patrol officers or patrol fleet. So again, if anybody is looking for a per diem job, the application, I believe, should be on the website, or you can come down to forty, Washington Street, pick one up, or to sixty-one Main Street.
Very good. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, chief. To our new clerk, again, welcome. Anything to report? Congratulations. I handled the elections very well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. No, no report, though.
Okay, very good. To our villain attorney who brought us the good news, Lawrence Stager, anything to report?
I have nothing to report. Just nice to meet all of you and look forward to working with you over the next couple of weeks.
Very good, then. Thank you. Finally, to our business administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. I just want to report that the appointments that we made at the last meeting to the building department have improved the scheduling of inspections, and right now, the building department is on time with all their inspections and their plan review. It's working out well. Second thing, starting tomorrow at eight thirty, the borough buildings will be open to the public for full service. Masks are required and social distancing is required. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, anything for the business administrator?
Hey, Art, I had a question about the building department. Can we get any more applications for the building inspector?
At, at this time, the part-time building inspector is handling all the inspections along with Mr. Droppa, who now has his license. And to help save not having to raise the building rates again, right now, we're working comfortably with part-timers.
All right, so what's the chance of Mr. Droppa, since he just got licensed, that he could become a building inspector eventually?
He is licensed as the building inspector at the lowest level. He has two more levels to complete, which would take a couple of years.
Mr. Landenski, I know I reached out to you last week regarding this because you did say that the appointment we had, we made it last meeting was going to be temporary. I know you say saving money, but we haven't even interviewed anyone. You've said you didn't do any of the interview. So how do we know that we will be saving money by not having a prime construction code?
Councilwoman Muir, I spoke to number the applicants and asked them for their salary requirements. And their requirements are very high. More than what we budgeted for for a construction official building inspector. And as you know by state law, if we have a deficit at the end of the year, by law, we have to raise our construction fees again. And we're trying to avoid that.
Mr. Landenski, but since you became acting construction code official, we have spent none of that salary and we keep pushing it off and pushing it off. And I don't think this is beneficial for our town. I think we need a full-time construction official at our borough. I'm going to keep pushing for this. I think that it was a poor judgment to not interview and negotiate people's salaries if possible. But just to say that we're doing okay now, I don't think that is a correct answer.
Why?
I was going to ask the same question.
Why don't you think it, what, what, what have you, why, that's a pretty general comment. What's not getting done?
Well, because I keep constantly getting complaints that it's a hassle to keep the process moving. Yes, we just got somebody right now. I'm sorry, we have not caught up with the issues that we have. We have developers that want to start that can't do, can't do that. And I think that Mr. Landenski should be prioritizing being a business administrator and not a construction official. This is, that isn't benefit.
And it's your, and it's your statement here tonight that the reason why the issues with the developers that are trying to do things are because of the South River Construction Office, or does it have something to do? Like most of us are aware of, it has to do with a lot of the issues that the developers are having with the county. Because, because, because I'm, because I'm aware of some of the things that are going on in town, a couple of the issues that are going on in town. None of them relate to the construction office, relates to issues and holds up by the county.
County.
Excuse me, I have not been, wasn't even discussing that particular developer that you're talking about. I've gotten several other complaints that the process does not move quick enough. And it's because Mr. Landenski should be prioritizing being the business administrator and not construction official. There needs to be more direction within the borough. Our part-time construction officials are part-time. We have full-time people in the building that need more assistance than what they are getting right now. And I'm just saying that on behalf of what I hear and what I see. I go to the borough constantly. And there needs to be a little bit more of an assistant. I'm not here back. I'm not talking bad about Mr. Landenski. That's not what I'm saying. But he is our business administrator. He can't be wearing several hats to try to save bundles of money like the mayor says, where it's not benefiting our residents.
Well, again, you know what, Councilman, it's always great when, you know, that you've heard or this or that. And again, and I think all of us on this call, on the governing body, we've all, including yourself, and I appreciate you're not, you know, you're not singling out Mr. Landenski for anything. But, you know, I can tell you the number of times that I've gotten phone calls from people and you go to find out and then and what the issues are. Where the mayor has, or Mr. Seola has, or Council McGindi has, or anybody else, you included. Where we come to find out that, you know, there's, there's somebody, there's somebody's story and then the truth is somewhere in between. That it's not just, you know, well, I've heard that there's a backup or this has happened. I, I, I I'm not, I'm not saying that your, your comments aren't worthy of being said. I am saying I hear this all the time about how this isn't being done and that's not being done. Then we come to find out it is getting done. We come to find out that paperwork wasn't filled out or that, or that things that were supposed to be done weren't done. So it's, that's a very, you know, it's a very broad statement you're making that things aren't getting done. And again, I'm down there too. I, and every time I, and I saw Mr. Drop it today, I saw Mr. Drop it today. I asked, asked Mr. Landenski, I stopped by the construction office. I asked him about the scheduling and stuff like that. Things are getting, things get scheduled when they're supposed to get scheduled. And again, when you talk to the construction officials or you talk to Mr. Landenski, that we're being, that, that there are things that, you know, it's not just a matter of, oh, I call, I called and somebody complained to you. That's nice. Then we come to find out that, well, maybe it's not as, it's not really, that's not the issue. Maybe there's some other things that aren't being done. And I, again, I know other council members can probably speak to the same thing. But just to say that, you know, well, things aren't getting done, I heard, I've heard that song for many moons. And I don't, I don't buy it. I don't agree with it. And unless you, unless there's things that you've brought up specifically to Mr. Landuski that you can show us that aren't getting done. I mean, again, it's nice for somebody to say that and I appreciate we want things to work as smoothly as possible. But go with the proof.
Okay, I will have.
Okay, but an obvious question. Mr. Landenski, now that we have these people hired, are you doing anything with the construction office?
That's administrative work and I am the fire protection subcode.
Okay, so you're only doing the fire code now?
And the administrative part of it, that's all.
Which consists of what?
Signing certificates, checking things that come in for completeness.
It was Mr. Lawrence's full-time job. And it was overwhelming for him. I, I just don't see how we can do it with our business administrator needing to be our business administrator and our construction official. But that's my opinion. I get it.
Well, something that's very obvious. Would you be so kind as to keep track of the statistics? How long does it take for a permit to come in, inspections to be done? Just see how long it takes and we have something to compare it about. Because all of this is all very nice, but it's anecdotal. Now, some statistics would be nice. Okay, moving on to the governing bodies' reports on their various liaisons. We'll start, let's see, last time I started, we'll start with Councilwoman Ballas.
Oh, I haven't had any meetings. School's coming to an end soon, so there, I know the Board of Ed has a meeting next week on Zoom. And I'll be in touch with my other committee and see what's going on for anything planned in the summer. That's it.
Okay, very good. Councilman Seola.
Thank you, Mayor. The environmental committee is in reviewing the tree applications. Their meetings are on the first Thursday of each month at the library. So if anybody wants to participate there, they're more than welcome. Our EDC is, will be meeting this Wednesday. Their meetings are the third Wednesday of every month. And they are reviewing a bunch of things. They're meeting, going to be meeting with the planning board and zoning board to help streamline application processes for the new businesses that are trying to move into town, so there's no bottlenecks. And also the NJEDA, which is the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, announces today that they're reopening the pre-registration for phase four of the Small Business Emergency Assistance Program. The registration is, the pre-registration, I should say, will be open, it's open now. And will remain open till Wednesday, June thirtieth at five PM. Applications will become available following a pre-registration period. Beginning July seven, the registrations will be for restaurant, food services, drinking places, codes beginning with seven-two-two, childcare providers and small businesses. And then on July eighth will be the small micro businesses under, I believe it was five employees, if I'm not mistaken. So that's all in the process now. So anybody, you can log on to the NJEDA for small businesses to pre-register for the class four Small Business Emergency Assistance Program. And with that, Mayor, okay, and then their well, too, as we stated earlier, is progressing. They're working away on that. And our electric department is continuing with our maintenance on our electrical lines. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Tony, where does the EDC meet?
The EDC right now is meeting at the Reamar in the hall.
Okay, Mr. Gindy.
Thank you. Our next planning board meeting is tomorrow, June fifteenth. I encourage you to come. There's going to be a lot of interesting discussions about the commercial as well as the cannabis along with quite a few businesses that are looking to come into our town. Our next zoning meeting is going to be on June twenty-second, which is also on a Tuesday. We just recently had the fishing derby, which was held on June fifth. It was a really good turnout. Parks and Rec and Keisha did a phenomenal job putting this together. We had well over sixty participants. The pond was pretty much filled. It was a good turnout. And I know that she is still doing Zumba. It's doing very, very well. Our next session is going to be July twelfth and July nineteenth. I know there's still registration. Please come out and register. Slots are limited. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gerchinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. With this, I'd like to thank our Public Works Department for Memorial Day, for cleaning the town and everything. And our services and everything to our day of remembrance and everything for all of our foregone service members. We had somewhat of a parade and hopefully next year it'll become, we'll be back to normal, back to full swing again too. I'd like to thank the people and the police department and everything for giving us the opportunity to pay our respects and everything. And also like the police department had mentioned too, we are looking for crossing guards. I know we're in a downswing and it's the end of the school year, but you know, please, it's, it's a good opportunity for someone for some part-time work if they'd like it. Of course, with our well, it's ongoing thing, just like Tony and our borough engineer had mentioned, it's an ongoing thing. And hopefully it will soon be completed and we'll be back online. With that, that's pretty much it, Mayor. I thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Mara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My Board of Health meeting will be tomorrow, June fifteenth at six PM. Just want to remind everybody that the rabies clinic is on June nineteenth from twelve PM to three PM. That'll be at the DPW yard, nine Ivan Way. Also, our TV thirty-five will be meeting for their first meeting of the year at six PM at fifty-five Ridge Street. I do want to ask Mr. Landenski, do we have information on anything about the new camera for TV thirty-five?
We're getting information on the prices. Take three different quotes for each camera. And I've gotten a list of cameras that they are requesting. When I get that list back, we, I will meet with Mr. Cuccio and decide on which camera we can buy.
Okay. Well, we'll have our meeting the twenty-third. If we don't get it before then, then we can discuss it after. Also, the Human Relations Commission met earlier this month and I want to thank them for the great job that they did at the flag raising this past Saturday. I was not able to attend, but I heard it was very well met. And we hope in the future that we will have more flag raisings. It looks like we might have another one for the end of this month. But that will be discussed very soon. Just keep a lookout on our Facebook page and on the borough website. And our next meeting will be in the beginning of July. I believe it's the first Tuesday of July. With that, for reports, I have nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilwoman. Mr. Repinger.
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Zenga described very nicely, the bond ordinance, the first reading tonight, that's where we, you know, all, all these items that were discussed and passed in the budget, now we have to bond and pay for. Again, as Mr. Seola has mentioned so many times over the last couple of years, each year we don't do these things puts us behind two, maybe one or two years or more. So again, this is, this is your tax money hard at work. Replacing police cars and, and public works equipment and fire equipment and all kinds of other things. It's always one of those things, you don't like to spend the money until you need it, right? And all these, and you know, until your garbage doesn't get picked up because a thirty-year-old garbage, twenty-five-year-old garbage truck breaks down or something along those lines. So again, that, that was, that's one of the things we did tonight. The Library Board of Trustees will meet next Tuesday night at the library at seven PM. And something that came up between the last meeting and, and now was we did have a light, a power outage due to a lightning strike. Art, was it in, was it in North Brunswick? But I know it knocked out parts of North Brunswick, Milltown, South, and South River.
I believe the strike was in East Brunswick or Milltown.
Right. And, and just so all the, all the Mensa Society members of South, of the South River, you know, you're from South River, who again, get on and blast the borough for having the worst, you know, utilities department in the world. Yes, as usual, it's South River's fault that a lightning strike had. But the good news is, while Mr. Seola, Mr. Landuski and I were standing in the rain down at the substation within ten minutes of the power going out to try to find out what's going on. Luckily, the, the PSENG was on site right away, as were our borough employees. And exactly what was supposed to happen, happened. There was, there was the surge, the system read it, just tripped it out. And then unlike setting a circuit breaker in your house, it does take some time, it takes, they have to just de-energize the lines. They reset the lines, they then get the wall clear, they stay, they, they set it back up and the line, and, and things work as, as, as they were supposed to. As, as Bruce mentioned in his talk about, you know, that the, the, the electrical substation upgrades that are done every year was again shown to be exactly what you're supposed to do. You have to, you have to, you know, you have to spend the money to make sure that, that we, that we don't have these, a horrible disaster. So again, thanks to our folks and the PSENG folks, got the system up and running in about, I wasn't that with half an hour maybe.
Was it thirty-five minutes we were back on?
Thirty-five minutes we were back up. It's because, you know, because of the money we, part of it was because of the money we invested to make sure that the substation, you know, works the way it's supposed to do and the breakers work, work the way they're supposed to do. So that's, I, I just want to let everybody know that, you know, that things work the way they were supposed to. And then again, it's not like going down to your panel box when you, when you trip a breaker and just flip it back on. There's, there's a, there's a little bit more electricity flowing through those lines. And, you know, bear with us when it takes, when something like that happens out of town and we, and when we reset it. So good job, well done by them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's what I have for now.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything to report at this, for this one, because this, this part of our reporting is concerning liaisons and important matters for the town. Ryan will talk a little bit about different events that are going on in the town. We do come part to our agenda as to the public comments. You'll be given ten minutes to speak. Please give your name and your address. And you can get a hold of us by either literally raising your hand or by raising your hand through Zoom. I do know Ms. Fazio, I believe you wanted to say something. So we're going to start with you.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, and good evening all. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Krista Fazio. My parents live at Ten Leonard Dean. They are Denise and Michael Garrez. They are longstanding citizens in our community. I wanted to share this evening particularly about how dangerous Leonard Dean Avenue has become. My parents have lived there for a very, very long time. At one point, Leonard Dean was closed at the end, at the Whitehead end of the perpendicular throughway from Whitehead all the way to Old Bridge Turnpike. And since it is opened, it has become treacherous. My car was, is the latest victim of throughway traffic. I could speak only for myself, although I'm sure that there, there has been other information shared about this dangerous road. My parents have lost animals that by, by some error managed to get loose and be at the wrong place at the wrong time and get hit at 50 miles an hour. My parents have had a car totaled in front of their house that the, by a drunken driver who was again at some, somewhere up of 50 miles an hour. And there are children and animals and community members walking their animals along that street, and it is just horrific. And I'd like to propose that for safety reasons, we think about putting some, some traffic bumps along that road to slow down the traffic. I've heard some discussion that, that may have been suggested at some other time and maybe rejected because of concern that it might cause a hazard to the police or to the fire departments that use that access road. But I currently own a home in New Brunswick. I live off of the main, one of the main roads, Remston Avenue. And that is also like Leonardine, a major through street and has traffic humps along the way in lieu of traffic lights at some parts to slow down the traffic. And I'm imploring that we consider, while we're thinking about infrastructure and making some improvement to our town, we consider doing something to that, to that major throughway. I understand as well, and forgive me, I'm not 100% familiar with the street, that recently some other major through streets have been opened to allow access from the areas down towards the Whitehead Avenue and the, that part of town that's closer to the river all the way through Obridge Turnpike. And it's dangerous. It's dangerous. It's 25 miles and people drive on that road upwards of 50 and sometimes more miles per hour. It's become, it's become unbearable. And we, I implore that something get done before we have, there has been tragedies on that road. But before there's more tragedies than necessary. Thank you for letting me speak.
Chief.
Go ahead, Mr. Gindy.
Chief, is it possible that maybe we could look into, I know DOT wants to find a time, we explored road bumps in the road, which you was talking about, but could we entertain looking at rumble strips? Like what they have at the Parkway entrances or exits as well as the turnpike?
Yeah, we'll, we'll revisit this and we'll look at rumble strips. We'll look at speed humps. We'll look at the four-way stop signs. You know, everything, every, is everything we try to, try to put out there always, always will have an unintended outcome.
Right.
What, what we tried to propose to do, the best thing we've been trying to do is educate and then enforce. But unfortunately, you know, people's speed, majority of the time, it's the neighbor, it's the people from the neighborhood. But we will definitely revisit this. We'll revisit, speaking with the DOT about looking at the rumble strips. Rumble strips, you know, you put them out there and it creates a loud noise for the neighborhoods. Every time a car goes over, it's going to create, create a noise. So neighbors will be complaining about the noise. Speed humps, it slows the response from police, fire, EMS. And if somebody happens to be driving down there that doesn't know the speed hump is there, it might create an issue there. Four-way stop signs are what we're trying to look at now to try to maybe ease the traffic there. But we will definitely revisit those other two options, too, and we'll, we'll get back to you.
We also, throughout the speed, the speed trap thing, that we can see what the speed is averaging on that road.
Yeah, we put down our portable speed signs, the ones that are attached to the poles. Unfortunately, the big speed sign, the big speed trailer that we have, the batteries, rechargeable batteries that we've had for the last five years are at their, end of their lifespan, so we are trying to work on getting that back out. But we do have the small portable ones.
Forgive my interruption, however, that speed measuring device is at the lower part of Leonardine rather than at the upper part closer to Obridge Turnpike where the traffic blowing up the hill picks up speed and where traffic turning off of Obridge Turnpike is already going at an excessive speed. So the area where my parents live, which is number 10, is only maybe three houses away from OBT. And I have to tell you, I've been, I'm a military member. I came home after serving service in 2006. And since I've been home, it's, it's only gotten faster around here. So forgive me, that maybe we could think about finding that, that average speed calculation on another part of Leonardine.
Went up to sign closer there. I did not realize that it was so quick. It's the first time I'm hearing it. Because I, I do know your parents and I hope that they are well. So Chief, look into that, and if you could please contact them directly and talk to them. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Fazio. I see Mr. Trigar has raised his hand. Hello, Mr. Trigar.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for, thank you for having me. How do we get that?
He's muted again. You're muted.
Yeah. So I have a couple of questions about this cannabis ordinance. Number one is, why is the downtown area not allowed to have the authorized cannabis businesses that the rest of the business areas are allowed to have?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember it. What you might want, if you have specific questions, Mr. Trigar, why don't you email them to me and to the council in general? At our next meeting, we'll be able to answer them specifically.
Okay, I was kind of hoping to get a little bit of handle on it for the planning board meeting tomorrow. Also, I noticed in, in the ordinance, there is a restriction that you can't have more than $5,000 in cash on hand in the business. And I was wondering, are, do we have that sort of restriction for other businesses in town, like the restaurants or the banks, that they're not allowed to have $5,000 in cash in the business?
Again, off the top of my head, I haven't, I didn't study for this meeting with this. So I can't tell you unless somebody else happens to be, have been sleeping with the ordinance and knows it backwards and forwards.
Mr. Trigar, I'll look into this for you by tomorrow. I'll have an answer.
All right, I appreciate that. You know, because I noticed that, I mean, this, this is a new thing. And there could be a lot of revenue that the town could get from retail sales. And I understand that there's a lot of pushback on retail sales across a lot of communities in New Jersey. And I would just hate to see South River kind of, kind of lose out on something for maybe a fear of change or we're kind of worried about things that might happen. I mean, what, what's the worst that could happen? We'd have a bunch of jazz musicians with tie-dyed shirts hanging around, playing their saxophones on the street. You know, I just, I'd hate to see we jump on the bandwagon to outlaw these things where it's, it's a new thing. It's 2021, and I think the town could really benefit from it. I don't think we should be afraid of it. We have a very successful dare program in town. We have a very active community with parents that keep on top of their kids' activities. So I don't think we should be too afraid of this. And instead of outline, outright just outlawing it, we should, we should probably try to embrace it because there's a lot of money that, that could help the town in a lot of ways. We could have free recreation for the kids in town. We could have a lot of things that could really benefit the town. So let's not be too quick to jump on the bandwagon as the other towns and be afraid of it. So that's just kind of my opinion.
Thank you, sir. I noticed, I don't know your name, but somebody by the name of Joe Scott there's had.
Yes, Mayor.
Please give your name and address, and you have 10 minutes.
My name is Joe Gerkowski, Mayor. I reside in East Brunswick. However, I'm a former sergeant for the Borough of South River for 28 years. Past member of the South River Board of Education for 11 years. And my parents were lifelong residents of the Borough of South River. Just to wish to comment on a few things, which as a former police officer, I find very disturbing in the Borough of South River. Three officers, I understand, are on paid leave. They've been on paid leave for approximately one year. Paid leave, they're over making six figures, I understand. My thing is, I understand the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office has dropped a criminal complaint in a matter indicating that there was not enough physical evidence. My question is now, who is conducting the internal investigation of the alleged incident that occurred? The criminal complaints have been dropped. However, right now, what happens, there's an internal investigation that takes place. And I'm not sure if the borough's conducting it. I'm sure the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office is not because they're the ones that originally signed a criminal complaint. Or is the Attorney General's Office or the Monmouth County Prosecutors? But my question is, who is conducting that internal investigation?
Chief, would you like to answer that? I believe I know the answer, but can you answer that?
Yeah, I believe I can. The, the Internal Affairs Investigation is being conducted by the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office.
Chief, do you find that conflicting since the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office signed the complaint and then dropped the complaint?
Sorry, I'm going to cut in, cut in right here. I don't think that it's appropriate for the chief to, to comment on that. He did answer your question in regards to who is conducting it, but I don't think that it is appropriate for him to answer that question.
Okay, just a personal, my personal view as law enforcement officer for 28 years that did work with the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office with investigations. I don't think they should be conducting an investigation. That's just my point of view. Do we have a timeline when we believe this investigation should be completed? I mean, it's been going on for a year right now, over a year, with borough residents paying six-figure salaries for people that are, are home.
It will be done when it is done.
So it could be a year, it could be two years, and the borough residents are going to pay.
It's up to the prosecutor's office.
Okay. The other question I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The ordinance in regards to the appointment of a chief of police, maybe Mr. Landenski could answer this. If the, if the police chief recommends someone for the appointment of his position, are the mayor and council required to appoint that person that the chief has recommended for that position? An example is, the former chief recommended, well, he recommended he would appoint an individual. Now, is the mayor and council bind by the chief's recommendation on the appointment of a chief?
Say no, no.
Okay. So the ordinance doesn't say that. You could, you could disagree with the chief of police and you could name your own chief of police?
Yes.
Okay, very good. One final point that I have is with the Class III officers that I saw, the agreement between the South River Board of Education and the Borough Council. Just another point of view, what's going on in the state of New Jersey. Most municipalities are getting away with the Class III officers. If you look at Middlesex County, I don't know how many you'll find with Class III officers. Most are going for the school boards in charge of the police. Just take a look at East Brunswick. Again, they hire former officers, armed officers. The town basically has nothing to do with it, and it's run by the school board. It's something to look into, and you don't really see too much of the Class III officers in school districts anymore. You could see the towns are getting away from it and letting the local educational institutions run those officers, which saves money to the towns and saves money for the school board. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
To see you again, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I see Emily has raised her hand.
Hi, my name is Emily Link. I live at 100 George Street. And I also wanted to talk about the cannabis ordinances. And I just wanted to say that, while I love South River a lot, there are some empty storefronts on Main Street that I feel like bring down the look and the feel of the town. And I think that if we were to allow retail sales, that we would bring a new business into this area that has space for it. And also, as other towns around us try to ban it, people from outside of South River who might not usually travel to South River will come here and they'll be exposed to all of the other great businesses that we have on Main Street. And I think that it's an opportunity to get more tax, tax dollars that can go to the town and bring more business patrons in. And I, the unknown can be scary, and I just urge everyone to, you know, consider it more and not just let your immediate fear of it result in an automatic no vote. I think that as I've done research, I see a lot of positives that we could bring into the town, and I just hope that the council is willing to look at that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. Is there anyone else on first call, second call, third call? Wait, wait, one more. Mrs. Garrettson?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. We can someone see you.
Yes, this, this last comment and a couple of comments about downtown made me think about the parking situation in front of our businesses. That according to my husband, who wants to frequent places downtown, when he grabs a meal after a service in the evening, there just aren't enough parking places. So I'd, I'd like to just kind of put it out there that we might be thinking how to create more parking. I was wondering, when, when the fire station on, the fire stations that's going to be destroyed, the one on, you know what I mean?
That's already been done.
Gone.
Has it? Okay, I haven't even noticed. Instead of just a flat lot with just parking for one level, could we consider a parking structure that would give more people a chance to park downtown and frequent businesses?
Well, I remember talking to a member of the Parking Authority about it. They looked at it years ago to do it on the Overt Street Lot, have a parking deck.
Okay.
He said he was shocked at the cost of building such a structure. It is in the tens of millions.
Tens of millions?
Yeah, so a parking spot, I'm sorry to cut you off, Mr. Mayor. A parking spot, a parking spot is worth about $32,000. That's the estimated number. So when you go to build an actual parking structure, just imagine, let's say, 100 spots. So yes, it has been, I guess you could say, explored, but the number would be too high, especially for the town. Maybe if there was an outside person that was interested in investing in it, I could understand. But unfortunately, for a town of this size, I mean, we don't have, we don't have it like New Brunswick or Freehold. Or unfortunately, it's not that way. But I understand what you're saying with the parking. Unfortunately, the parking is historically, it's always been the way it is. I mean, Mr. Trigar could tell you. I mean, Mr. Trigard could tell you. I can't tell you how many times he lives on, his buildings on Ferry Street. How many times people would park in front of this place just to use as a parking spot and it was unfair. But unfortunately, that's just the way it is as of right now. Maybe one day, you don't know. But right now, we're trying to fill up those storefronts and hopefully, you know, business comes into our town and it brings a demand. Maybe there will be an outside person that's willing to invest. Who knows?
I will stand corrected. It's not tens of millions. It's just simply millions and millions of dollars.
Okay, and we just, as we're getting ready to pave that, that hasn't been paved yet, right? The parking space for the police where the firehouse used to be?
Mayor, if I may, Mrs. Garrettson, the parking lot has been paved. It's scheduled for our police department for a secure area. So when the officers are bringing in a prisoner or carrying a weapon or doing something with their cars, the public is not going to be able to get near the police station or that parking lot. So that's, it's gonna be a secure area for our for our police.
Okay.
Their personal vehicles were being damaged at one point. I believe that's stopped now. But our police cars will be all in a quarantined area where nobody can access them and it's the safety of our officers that come first.
Mm hmm. Okay, then just one more point. As we start to pave things and repave things and sometimes have to dig up streets and repave them, I'd like us to start thinking about permeable cover. Especially since our town has an issue with storm water management that this is something that we start to look at every time we can to to put permeable cover, to plant plants and trees that soak up a lot of water. We're going to be exploring that in this in the Environmental Commission, but I I just want to put that out there as something we could be thinking about. Pavers actually, there's an advantage. It's much easier to to take a couple of pavers up and replace them than to fix fix a road. So there are advantages and I'd like us to explore that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I don't see anybody else. Well, I guess I do. Daniel V?
Yes, hello.
Please give your name.
My name is Daniel Vargas and I'm from South River, New Jersey, five Monish Street. I'm a longtime resident of here in the town. I have worked part time in the cannabis industry on the West Coast here in Portland, Oregon. And I'd like to speak on behalf of that in regards to the cannabis industry and the ordinances now that are going around in regards to non retail stores. I'd like to actually put up in regards to that saying that the retail cannabis industry itself, retail store settings make more than actual commercial grows and more than actual distributors in the long run. You have to understand they break down this cannabis and they sell it for a lot more retail, I guess MSRP you could say for the cannabis itself. So I'd like to see if you guys can look into that as far as opening up retail stores because if it's available in South River alcohol, as many liquor stores as there are and many bars as there are, I don't see why it would be an issue as for the town to make its revenue off of the cannabis industry itself, retail life. They they move a lot more money as far as most commercial growths, to be honest.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your call from Portland.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, you might want to read, I guess, some of the written stuff that we've been getting as well. I guess it's a question from a resident.
Well, I see the chats. We took care of Ms. Fazio, Mr. Trigar, Mr. Smith asking about the EDC meeting, the REAMR. It appears to be a closed door meeting openly to those invited. Mr. Seula, is the EDC closed to the public?
Not that I know of.
As far as I know, all committee meetings, commission
to the public.
Are open to the public. So, Mr. Smith, if you're not doing anything on Wednesday evening, go to the REAMR. Okay. Anyone else? I don't see anybody else.
Hi, this is Emily Link again. I just wanted to, something that Mrs. Garrison said that about the parking situation. The Middlesex County Improvement Authority, just like a week ago, announced that they are opening up a parking division and I was wondering if the town or any of the council members have any plans to reach out to them to maybe work on the parking situation downtown.
I can tell you that the planning board is going to be reviewing the master plan and one of the things that I'm charging them with is to look at parking. It has been an age old bugaboo in this town. But something has to be done and it has to be done something more creative than just the usual, well, there's no more space. Well, let's think outside of the box and see.
Thank you.
All right. On first call, second call, third call.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy, second to Mr. Seula, to close the public portion. All in favor? Against the eyes have it. Moving on to the agenda, there are several appointments that I had the planning board appoint a planning board member to full time and the Environmental Commission to appoint their chair. I've been told that I have to do it, so I have done that. Then we go to the consent resolutions. Ms. Minnick, if you could read the consent resolution.
Sure, one sixty seven authorized contract award for utility billing service.
Stop, stop, stop. Isn't there a, isn't there a, something that goes with the consent resolution? Isn't there a I'm sorry, so there's usually a a resolution for the consent resolution, right? Or am I missing something? Well, this is usually, we've had for, you know, since we started having consent resolutions, right? There's a statement, not just reading them. There's about how we were able to do this and we're, as if they were acted upon individually. Isn't that usually how we start this? Or my, or my, am I fading into oblivion by not knowing about this change? Right? There's always, there's always a a statement about what we're doing before they're all read about that as if they're being acted on as as a whole, right? There's a resolution. Hello? Am I in the last twenty years?
Well.
There's the consent, there's a, there's a reading of the consent resolution. It's not just you start reading them. People need to, never mind. I I'm gonna fade away very, very ungraciously, Mr. Mayor.
Council President, I apologize. I should have told Ms. Menach about the resolution. Slipped my mind.
I have, see, see, it's all in here and it's coming out slowly.
There is a chapter, I believe, chapter one sixty seven, if that's.
That's, you know what? Where where's Lauren? Lauren, there's no problem, there's no problem with her just listening, reading the titles of all the resolutions and then we just vote on it as it's as it's a consent resolution? Or do we, I would, again, I'm old, I forget things. I always thought we had to say that before we could just start.
Usually there is a a comment or statement that is made and there's a resolution that's that's separate that you you adopt that includes all of the resolutions that are part of the consent agenda, yes. What you can do is, you know, because I know it's gonna mess with the the numbering. I mean, you can, you can make that a, what would be one eighty? Or do you have extra?
It could be one sixty six A if that's fine.
That's fine.
Excuse me, you don't need a, you don't need a resolution. You don't need a resolution. There's a statement that's read.
You do it separately?
So and so, non controversial items can be done by a consent resolution.
Okay. You do it a little differently from my town, but that's fine, too, as long as there's a statement made before.
Okay. Then I'll tell you what, why don't we do it this way? I think Mrs. Ballas is running to try to find the
copy of it.
I'm looking for it. I can't, some last meeting, I can't find it.
So that's okay.
I keep it all together.
For the record, you keep looking. For the record, clerk, please read the resolutions as they are and after one eighty seven, one of the members will make a resolution to accept the previous resolutions that have been read as to be passed en masse and consent. Okay, so put that on the record then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we vote on the resolutions, am I able to ask just a question about one of the resolutions?
Yes, this would be the time.
One eighty four. I was just curious as it went out to bid and but why was it rejected?
Mr. Lundenski, why did we reject the RWJ Barnabas Health?
The bid at that time included a charge for the service and that was not part of the bid document.
Were they the only bidders?
They were the only bidders.
So what do we do after?
Going out for bid again. We have till the end of July, their service plus, plus they by contract would have to stay for a couple more months until the new people get settled away.
Okay, with the existing contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, I think Mr. Bray would just read something. I don't think we ever had it in front of us in print.
No.
I think you're right.
To read.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Never it in print. He just did it.
Okay, so we will look vigorously, Ms. Minnick, if you can put it on the record, just read the resolutions. Just go down the list.
Thank you. One sixty seven authorized contract award for utility billing services, one sixty eight authorized electric demand charge relief, one sixty nine authorized share service agreement with South River Board of Education regarding class three police officers. One seventy authorized shared service agreement with South River Board of Education for police presence, one seventy one authorized Middlesex County Recycling Enhancement Grant Submission. One seventy two authorized execution of license agreements, one seventy three permit a boot drive for the South River Fire Department Engine Company Number One. One seventy four authorized preparation for the NJDOT twenty twenty two trust fund application, one seventy five permit a voluntary canning fundraiser to support the South River Knights Football and Cheerleading, one seventy six authorized recreation department appointments, one seventy seven authorized insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget for clean communities, one seventy eight authorized stipend for appointment of deputy registrar, one seventy nine authorized performance bond release upon maintenance bond posting regarding William Street. One eighty authorized performance bond release upon maintenance bond posting regarding price place, one eighty one authorized zoning board of adjustment appointments, one eighty two authorized economic development commission appointment, one eighty three authorized certain utility refunds, one eighty four authorized rejection of proposals submitted by RWJ Barnabas Health, one eighty five authorized twenty twenty one slash twenty twenty two ABC license renewals, one eighty six authorized South River Fire Department Engine Company One appointment and one eighty seven authorized the bills and claims list.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent resolution as listed.
I don't know if you could necessarily do it. How about Mrs. Ballas, you seconded it?
I did.
Okay, very good then. Mr. Eppinger has made a resolution that we vote on aforementioned resolutions by consent, meaning that there is no dissent. Mrs. Ballas has seconded it. Therefore, I will ask Ms. Minnick to do the roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes, with the following extensions. One seventy three, one eighty six and on one eighty seven, twenty one dash zero one three seven three zero zero eight seven eight zero one two eight three zero one two three zero zero one two three one and zero one three two nine.
Thank you. Councilman Gindy?
Yes, with the abstention to consent resolution one seventy three as well as one eighty six and then from one eighty seven, the following twenty one dash zero zero eight seven eight zero one two eight three zero zero eight nine four zero one zero eight seven zero one two three zero zero one two three one and zero one three.
Thank you. Councilman Gertensky?
Yes, with the exception of Resolution number one eighty five specifically license number one two two three three one dash zero five six dash zero zero one. I wish to abstain on that particular license.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Council President Eppich?
Yes.
Okay, and so our consent resolutions have been consented to. We come now to the part of the agenda of their governing body comments where we talk about the good and welfare of the borough, places we've been, special thousands, things like that. I will start with, I went, started beginning of the alphabet. I'll start at the end. Councilwoman Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to mention that the Human Relations Commission sent to you, I believe, this week, Mr. Mayor, two additional names for the Human Relations Commission that are eager to start up with us. I also want to request or see if it's possible that all our committees start meeting, whether by Zoom or in person. I know I'm still waiting for one of my committees to to have a meeting. The Mayor's Advisory Board of Persons with Disability. And I know a few of our committees have not met at all, so I'm just requesting that we start meeting. I I see everyone's eager to get out and about and a little bit of normal will will be happy to start. I also want to say that I'm happy that the borough will be opening for everyone to come. Will our in person meetings start as well, Mr. Mayor? Is that a possibility?
Probably sometime either August or September.
Okay, because as as Mr. Eppinger doesn't like the noise coming from his house, that is my house all day, every day. I have a two year old behind that door waiting to bust it open after this meeting, so.
Been there, done that.
I am more than ready for our in person meetings and you know, just getting people out and about again and I'm sure with the vaccinations going through, people are starting to feel more comfortable going out. I did have a question to our borough clerks that I'm not sure she'll be ready for, but I wanted to know how many mercantile license we've gotten since you have began.
I'll have to get back with you on that.
Okay, quite a few though, because I do see some new businesses popping up. I was just curious to know which ones have started.
My assistant has been handling them for the most part since I just got through an election and trying to get prepared for this meeting and liquor licenses are a real big deal this time of the year, so I'll have to get back with you on that.
Okay, thank you. Another thing about the liquor licenses coming out. I believe Mr. Bray a while back did mention a way that maybe we can give some relief to our small businesses in terms of the liquor licenses. I don't know if any of the council members ever looked into that or looked in the future, but I I would say now with the money that we do have coming from the government to help us assist, would that be a possibility for us to look into for our small businesses?
Well, again, you're just, again, you're once again just saying something. Are you specifically talking about there's a, there's a fee that liquor licenses have that we raise for they are used to retire licenses? Is that what you're discussing, what you're talking about?
I, yes, that is.
Okay, because you gotta, just to say, we gotta give our small businesses relief. Yes, that that is, I don't know where that is as far as I know it was discussed between the mayor, Mr. Lundenski, myself, Mr. Bray and Mr. Zanga and I I don't remember quite honestly where we were with with doing it, but I I think it was something that that Bill was gonna remind us about when it came time for for liquor license renewal about about not have not not charging for that we have, we have a right to that. Mayor, do you remember exactly where we left off of that? I think, wasn't it when we got close to renewal time, we were gonna have a discussion about not doing it or do we already change it? I can't, I can't remember. I apologize.
That's okay. As you get older, those things happen, Mr.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
As it is, since everybody has already applied and done through it, I, you know, we could discuss it for next year.
But to put that on, put that on the on the list, so I would imagine that again, Mr. Bray had mentioned it. And Council, the Councilman is correct. It was, it was something that was discussed about the fact that our. Our fund that we're allowed to build to help retire licenses. Has gotten to a certain dollar amount, and there may be no need to make it any larger, so we could stop collecting. That I don't, I forget how much it is per license per year, but it's.
I do have more information on that, so I can relay it to the council for. You know, the.
You're right. Julie, it was discussed. It was it was discussed, and Bill did bring it up.
Okay. Let me think. I lost my train of thought here. I'm going to say today's Flag Day. Happy Flag Day. And at the end of the week, it's Happy Father's Day, so I'd like to wish my husband a Happy Father's Day. Because every time I'm in here during these meetings, he's trying to control three little ones to not scream while we're in these meetings. So I thank him for all that he does for me and all of you. Happy Father's Day. And it will be the beginning of the summer, so I hope people enjoy, say, stay safe, stay cool. I know it seems like it's going to be a brutal summer. And we will be back again July twelfth, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Gertensky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, especially our DPW for the amount of work that they do and everything. Our utility department for the service with the electric was phenomenal on that particular evening. Because no sooner than I went turned around to go up there to take a look and investigate somewhat, the streetlights came on. And everything went back to normal again. So, you know, like kudos to them and everything. And also the rest of our public safety workers, our fire department and Robert Wood Johnsons for taking care of us. I'd like to thank Police Department for our Memorial Day. Like Councilwoman Mira has said, today is Flag Day. We had a brief ceremony down at the VFW for retiring. Warrant flags and. Aside from that, summer is coming. Let's watch out for the kids on the street and everything. Let's be safe. And it's wonderful to see people's faces again, too, and know if they're smiling at you or sticking their tongue out at you or whatever. But it's 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 a wonderful relief having they come about. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gindi?
Thank you. As you have seen, there's a lot of potholes that are being filled in. Bear with the DPW. I know they're doing remarkable job trying to clean up these streets as much as they can. So if there is something that they're missing, feel free to call the Department of Public Works. Just let them know where the pothole is. They will come out and resolve the problem. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to hold the second. Shot of the clinic for the Portuguese Club. Lourdes was very, very generous to give us the venue. We had a very nice turnout. Obviously, all the people came back. With all the clinics that we have been doing between myself and Jason, we are up to almost three hundred and fifty people that so far have been vaccinated. Which is more than we could say, and we want to try to keep it going. I know that now everywhere you go, they're doing the vaccinations. Even if it's not here, try to go out and get it. It could help in the future, especially when it comes down to traveling, and for that matter, you don't know what the wave could look like come to fall or winter. Fireworks. I know a lot of people have been talking through social media. We're not fireworks. Here is exactly the reason that we're not having. The South River School System is redoing the track. The actual project starts on July first. I re-spoke to the Board of Education, spoke to the superintendent. She has advised me that she could give me some type of answer or some type of direction by the end of July. If we can do it, I could tell you that we're going to work hard to get it done by the end of this month of August. If not, we're going to do our best to at least bring something to this town, to at least bring some joy and cheer and everybody out. So stay tuned. I will get you more information as the weeks go by. Police Department, I know there's been a lot of talk over social media. I keep getting phone calls. I keep getting screenshots. This is what I'm going to tell you. Just because of a issue that happened within the Police Department, all police officers should not be judged because of this. There are a lot of good police officers out there that still continue to do their job. They're there for you. When you dial nine-one-one, they're coming out for you. So feel, please, don't judge everybody because of a situation that happened. School, school is coming out now. I know there's about about a week or so left. Kids are going to be out. Please be careful. Drive slowly. They're already out on the bicycles. I can't tell you how many times I've seen them in and out of cars. Be aware of what's going on. The hot days are upon us. Don't forget your elders. Knock at their door if you're a neighbor. Make sure they're okay. And then here comes the big one. Ray Eppinger, I know that today is going to be his last meeting. I can't thank Ray enough for doing what he has done. I know that I had the opportunity to run with him. We had a phenomenal time doing it. I also had the opportunity to be a councilman on opposite side, and we still became, and we still remain friends. I can't thank him enough for what he has done for this town, for the residents. You know, I'll tell you what, I've learned a lot from you. We're surely going to miss you. I know you're not going far, but you know, you're always going to have us here no matter what. We, I wish you the best. And, you know, keep in touch with us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Oh, and happy Fourth of July.
Working my alphabet backwards. Councilman Ciola and then Councilwoman Ballas.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Flag Day for everybody. As Peter said, please watch out for the children. They're going to be out of school shortly. They'll be riding bicycles, running into the street. I can't tell you how many times I see the skateboards shooting out into the street in front of you. So please be aware of that. Like to thank our DPW, Water and Electric, for the job that they do every day, keeping this town up and running. And motivating everybody to get everything done and the maintenance being done also. For all our public safety personnel, thank you for everything that you guys do. Without this town, without your personnel, we'd be in trouble. So again, thank you for all our public safety. As our chief had mentioned, fireworks. Please obey by the law and do not use the aerial fireworks. Few years back, we had a resident shooting off fireworks in her backyard and caught a neighbor's house on fire. And the entire back of the house went up. So please be considerate of your neighbors, obey the law, and please don't use the fireworks. And I guess to my buddy, Mr. Eppinger.
Buddy.
We've been friends for, I don't even want to mention how many years.
Many.
I want to thank you for everything you've done for the borough, your family. You are true South Riverites. Way back as far as I can remember, you always were a person that volunteered and helped out in town. You will be truly missed. And again, I wish you the best of luck, Monica the same, on your new residence. And God bless you.
Thank you, my friend.
And with that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilwoman Ballas?
Yeah, first, I'd like to congratulate the eighth grade class of two thousand and twenty-one who will be moving. On up to the high school for next year. Congratulations to them as well as the South River High School class of two thousand and twenty-one seniors. They most definitely had an interesting year, to say the least, so I wish them all well. I wish everyone a Happy Father's Day to and those fathers who are no longer with us. Also, we don't have a meeting now until after the Fourth of July, so I wish everyone a Happy Fourth of July. And again, with the fireworks, be safe with them, abide by the law. It's not only damage you could do to somebody's house. I had an animal at one time. It's not fun to have them. Lose their composure, and I know a lot of people have that problem. As to Ray.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, no, no. We go back way back. Our parents knew each other. They sometimes, you know, socialized in the same circle. You went to school with one of my sisters. Was it Kathy?
Yes.
So you know her forever. Our families have at one point been intertwined, whether you went to school together or our parents knew each other. You have never backed down from a challenge. You have always, always maintained what is best for this town. We are going to miss you. You're not going to be far away, so you still have to come visit. Maybe you'll come back and watch a South River football game with me now that we'll be able to do it next in the fall. That will be fun, because you know, once you're a rat, you're always a rat, correct?
Correct.
So you take care, you and Monica. Good luck on on the next chapter of your lives, and we'll miss you.
Thank you, Donna.
By our tradition, we'll have the gentleman who is leaving, he'll speak last. I'll say my say's now. My, you know, I attended the Memorial Day Service, very nice, the fishing derby. The raising of the flag for Portugal Day, very nice. Our town is slowly waking up just in time. You know, summer is coming. It's, you know, change of season, you know, out with the old paper shredding event is coming. By all means, take advantage of it. Change of policy, we are opening up forty-eight Washington, which means you have to wear a mask. And you have to be social distancing. These are state rules. One thing we're not changing is no cash to pay bills. Checks, please. Don't want all that cash sitting there. Hopefully, you've been broken of that habit. You see, it's not difficult to do. Let me all wish you a Happy Father's Day and a Happy Fourth of July. And. Well, now we get to the point where we get all mushy. Because really, what what can I say? I mean, I know you're leaving, and I know you're not going to any place exotic like, you know, Pennsylvania. But, you know, I'm sorry, I think it's a little time. I just basically want to say thank you. First for myself, for making me being there, all the battles that we have fought over the years. And for teaching me how to be mayor. For four years, you were my predecessor. You taught me a lot. I learned a lot from watching you as and just. You were there for me to cry on, to vent, and I really appreciate it. I wanted to say thank you. And also, because I am mayor, I get to say this on behalf of the whole town. To thank you.
Ah, jeez.
That, you know.
Oh, man, you got it.
Yeah, they're all here because we have a lovely parting gift, but.
Please leave, will you?
People have no idea of the work that a mayor, especially as you did. Because you were charged with the problem of yanking South River out of the twentieth century, so let's say the nineteenth. And hurling it into the twenty-first century. And in the four years that you were here, it was just, it was something magnificent to behold. Because of you and what we were able to survive Sandy, we had things put into place. We have good people that we, that you hired. And because of your teachings, you know, you taught us to keep an eye on what really matters. I mean, you know, you're not going to find that we need twenty-six fire hydrants to be replaced. We look for new ways of doing things, and we're not afraid of the new. If we, if something works, great. And if it doesn't, hey, we tried. We tried to do something different. We'll change it and go on. So, you know, things are not written in stone. On behalf of the entire town, we thank you, and I especially thank your dear wife who conspired with us to make sure that.
She's devious. Everybody thinks she's nice. She's devious.
I wonder where she gets that from.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, but but we cannot end properly without at least one last Ray rant. We have to end with one. Now, if if I don't see Mrs. Adalino on here, but Sandra, make sure everybody cuts their damn grass. Number two. It's the summertime, and we talk about fireworks. Remember, this is a very developed town. Two o'clock in the morning, playing music and screaming at the top of your lungs because you've been drinking since three o'clock in the afternoon. It ain't nice. It ain't good. The chief's got better things that didn't tell people to shut up at three o'clock in the morning. So everybody, we're supposed to be a community. There's no reason for it. Let's stay together as a community. Third, I want to thank everybody from the borough and everybody around who was here this weekend. The reasons why my sister and my brother and their families and Monica and everybody are here is because we finally got a chance to put my mom. And bury her next to my dad on Saturday, which was, I want to thank you all for coming and your kind words, your cards, and coming to visit. You know, again, another chapter of South River came to close. She was a really good woman. She was active in town and and active in. Again, for those of you who may or may not know, my father was a councilman, and her and Monica shared the same thing, her dislike for politics. For the thank yous, I first of all, just want to thank everybody for their, for giving me the opportunity to serve them these many years. I was thinking about that today. Mayor Brasno, God rest his soul, first put me as an alternate to the planning board when I was twenty-eight. July fourth, I'm going to be here. It'll be over thirty years that I've been doing things. I've served six years on the school board. I've been a councilman for four and a half years, and I've been, I was the mayor for four, which was one of the most rewarding things I've ever done. It's, you know, South River is a great town. It's a great community. You've got good people serving. And I say this, and I've said this a couple of times, regardless of their political affiliation. The people who have served with me on the school board and in those various boards and commissions and on the governing body. We may disagree at times, but they've always had South River at heart. So I thank them for their service. We've lost a couple of them recently again, and it's, you know, it's sad to realize that that some of the good people are no longer with us. I thank my family and my friends, especially Monica. Come here, you. This, you know, I I told her when we, when we met in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, at Marquette some thirty-eight years ago. That no, that South River will remind her of Minneapolis where she grew up from. So I started being a politician even in college. She still, she still hasn't forgiven me for that, so. I love this town with all my heart. It's a new chapter in our lives. We're not going too far. That's why, you know, a lot of things are are changing. My office is moving out of New York into Metro Park, so a lot closer. And the last thing I want to do is I want to thank one person especially, all the people who work for the borough, obviously, and Art and the chief and everybody else. But John's words are very kind. I've had the privilege of knowing John for a very long time, probably, probably longer than John would like. But you guys, you folks don't realize, I I talk to John and work with John every day, every day. And there's not a more dedicated mayor in this state than John, John M. Krenzel. John cares about this town, and, you know, he does a lot of it's behind the scenes. You don't see it getting done. But I can assure you, I can assure you from somebody who's been through, sat in his chair before he did and worked with him. He was the best Borough Council President I could have ever have asked to work with. And he's done more for this community and continues than you'll ever know, because he's not going to blow his own horn, and he just gets up every morning. And it's the first thing on his mind when he gets up, and the last thing before he goes to bed, if he can get, if he can get to sleep. Is worrying about the latest thing going on in South River. So again, I thank you all. I will miss it. Monica's biggest concern is what the hell is he going to do with his time now? This is, so it's her fault. She's making me leave South River, kicking and screaming, and that's a lie. That's a lie. Just saying that. It's, it's time for a new chapter in our life. I appreciate, again, I appreciate this. And I, again, I always say I'm only, I always always say, just be careful. I'm only one election away. I'm only a couple of towns away. I can get, I can move back real fast if I, if I don't think things are going well. But thank you all. Thanks for all the kind words. All the best, and God bless South River. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Of course, with Johnny Mac retires, you know, that seed will be open in Woodbridge, but well.
Oh, no, 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 no. Why would I? As, as, as Andy Slary and so we said, South River had not only did it have have quantity, it had quality.
Very good, Dan. Let me go have a quick shout out to Gene Buck there. How are you? Very good, Dan. Let me go have a quick shout out to Gene Buck there. How are you, lovely lady? Good to see you. If there's nothing else, I'm going to ask Ray to adjourn the meeting one last time.
If there's nothing else to come before the governing body. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I think I got a motion by Councilman Gindi, a second by Councilwoman Ballas. All in favor? All opposed? Have a great night, everybody. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.